We will get started with our three candidates who are running for McFarland School Board. So, thank you to Megan, Cassandra, and Bruce for being here tonight. And we'll basically go with the same format. You'll have the two minutes for the introduction, the questions, and the conclusion. We'll have two minutes for each. Bella will give, put it up at 30 seconds. And when the 30 seconds are down, or when the two minutes are completed, she'll put that paper down. So you know, to wrap it up. So we will go ahead and get started.
Perfect. So for introduction, please provide an introduction and tell us about yourself, background, education, and why you are running for the school board.
Fantastic. Well, hello, everyone. My name is Megan Chapman. First and foremost, thank you so much to the chamber for hosting us, as well as the village for giving us this amazing room. And whoever brought cookies, thank you. I'm on, oh, thank you. I'm gonna grab one later. But like I said, my name is Megan Chapman. And interestingly enough, I am not a McFarland native, nor a Wisconsin native. I'm originally from Tucson, Arizona. I am a military brat. My dad is a retired lieutenant colonel from the Air Force. And so I moved around a ton when I was younger. I'd actually been in seven school districts by the time I was in third grade, which probably added a little bit to my outgoing nature. But we ended up setting up roots in Middleton, so I graduated from Middleton High School. I went to UW-Lacrosse where I got my degree in marketing French. I can easily say I am not fluent in French. However, Duolingo has been very helpful in renewing some of my skills. So after I graduated, my dad and stepmom actually had a baby. So I do have a 22-year-old sister. And that prompted me to move back to Madison where I entered the professional realm. I do have a pretty interesting job. I've spent the last 22 years working in the alcohol industry. So I am a sales director for a distillery in northern Wisconsin called Nolton House. It hasn't officially launched distribution yet. So keep an eye out for Ten Head Vodka and Gin coming to a bar and grocery store near you in May. But my husband, Mike, is here. He and I have been married since July of this year. And I've been living in McFarland for just about eight years. I do have two boys. My older son, Cooper, is 19. He is a freshman at UW-Stevens Point where he is studying marketing and is actually their first official assistant football coach. He played football here and then entered the coaching world. And then I do have a 16-year-old son named Colin. I'm so excited to be running for the McFarland School Board. I have a lot of enthusiasm and the love that I have for this district and everything they do for the students, the parents, the community members. I think it's just amazing, and I can't wait to be a part of it.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Cassandra Dennis. I am a mother of two students in the district. I have a sixth grader, my son, he is at I Am MS this year. And then I have a second-grade daughter who is at CEPS. So right on the cusp of the transition to the new school in the district, which is a really exciting time for her and us in our house. I've been married to my husband, Kyle, for 14 years. I am not originally from the Wisconsin area. I'm actually originally from Illinois. But my husband works for UW Health. And so we decided that here is where we wanted to raise our family. Originally, we were living on the other side, the Madison side of Segal Cow. And I heard all of the wonderful things about the McFarland School District. And so we were blessed that our oldest kiddo was open enrolled. We knew we wanted to expand our family. And at that time, the open enrollment was closed. So we knew we needed to get over to the McFarland side, which is what we did. I am a graduate of University of Illinois-Chicago, and I hold a BS in Biology for my daytime job. I am a practice manager for a dental office in the community that is a small local business that allows me to wear many hats. So many HR hats, such as hiring, recruitment, day-to-day operations, budget management, all of those things that are key in looking at a budget and finances for an organization. The reason I decided to run for the McFarland School Board is that in 2022, I was on the Strategic Planning Committee. And at that time, I was really able to engage and sit and learn from a group of administration, or, excuse me, admins, and everyone in the community of what our goal is really for the district and where we want to go. And so that is what really excites me to think about how we can go in the future to meet the needs of our learners every day. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bruce Fisher. I want to thank again the chamber and the village for putting this on. And for all of you doing your civic duty, I kind of feel like my years as a civic teacher and a U.S. history teacher maybe have paid off, but not to everybody here because I haven't all had you. I am a little nervous, and that's just because I tend to be pretty high-energy. And I am concerned about, is this a Last Supper that we're having? Because it does look rather kind of, well, we'll leave it at that. Anyway, I grew up in Rhode Island. I received my bachelor's degree in education from Syracuse University. And I was a teacher for 40 years. My teaching experience included a year in a rural upstate New York school, one year in an inner-city school in Chicago, and 37 years teaching middle school and high school and coaching track and cross-country at McFarland. I also taught for one year in Scotland on a Fulbright teaching exchange. And I spent five weeks, one summer, studying the Russian public school system on a Fulbright study abroad. So my, my teaching experience, educational experience, has been very diverse. I know the challenges facing teachers. I understand the problems facing our public schools. I bring a unique, and I think an important, perspective to the school board. My wife and I have lived in McFarland since 1985, and our children attended and graduated from the McFarland schools. I'm currently on the school board and running for reelection. I originally ran for the school board three years ago after being asked by a former student who was concerned about low teacher morale and the fact that our schools were not really performing up to their potential. The student felt that with my long experience as a teacher, as well as my deep understanding of the community, I might be able to help turn things around. I'm very proud of the fact that I think I've helped do that. We have accomplished a great deal during this time. And you can see this accomplishment on my Facebook page. It's too long for me to list. I'm just kind of blown away by what we've accomplished. We've come a long ways. And in a recent Wisconsin State Report card, the McFarland School District was ranked second-best among all public schools in Dane County. My goal these next three years is to continue to build on this progress.
Question one, what excites you the most about wanting to join the McFarland School Board?
What excites me most about running for the McFarland School Board is the vision the district has for the future. The school district that is, has a vision that is talking about an equitable and inclusive community committed to student belonging, achievement, and growth, allows for our students to be prepared for life outside of McFarland. My goal is that when our graduates leave, they're global citizens, and they are ready to go out and tackle different spaces in the world. And that is really exciting to think about. And it aligns with my passion of diversity, equity, and inclusion. So it really excites me to think about how the decisions and policies we make in the next couple of years really prepares our students for the future and allows them the potential to set them up to be the change that we want to see in the world.
I wasn't quite sure how to answer this because I'm already on the board, so... What I put down is, I'm most excited about the fact there's such a positive feeling in our school district. Morale in the school district is so much better than it was when it took office three years ago. We have a new superintendent. I didn't know he was going to be here, Aaron Tarnitzer. And he is amazing. But that's the truth, and I can, I can guarantee that the other board members who are here will agree. He has infused a new dynamic into our school district. We have established a new five-year strategic plan with input from members of the community. I was part of the Strategic Plan Committee. And I found out, kind of in an awkward way, which is kind of typical for me, that I really shouldn't be voting on it because actually I'm gonna have to vote on it when it comes to the board. So I was a non-voting member, but it was really interesting to be involved, and I was glad I did. I'm excited about the fact that we started a community volunteer mentoring system to help some of our students who are most at risk. I myself am mentoring a middle school student. It is not easy work. It is not easy work, but it is so important. Working with our youth is the greatest investment that we can make as a society. We need to expand this program. It doesn't cost our district anything, but it helps kids who really need to be helped. And we need this. There's still a lot of work to do, but I think our district's ready to take on new initiatives, mainly because we are pumped right now. I see myself, and I always have in my life, as a catalyst for ideas to creatively work with other members of the board to make our schools even better.
So what I am most excited about joining the McFarland School Board is that I was raised in a family that is truly dedicated to service. As I spoke about earlier, my father is a veteran, my husband is a veteran, and the notion of service is something that really is close to my heart. I have a very interesting perspective when it comes to the school board and the oversight it entails because in my family, there is quite a bit of school board goodness, so to speak. My father has been on the Middleton School Board for, I believe, eight or nine years at this point. And he was the Middleton School Board president as well during the COVID years. As a parent of two boys, two students within the McFarland School District, I have seen the amazing things that the school district does at every single one of our schools, from CEPS all the way up to the high school. I am completely that mother who went to all the Timberly events, and you can see me at every football game, volleyball, baseball, basketball. I can neither confirm nor deny that I might have started the first-and-ten McFarland chant at all the home varsity football games. So with that, I want to bring that enthusiasm and excitement and sense of community to the school board. With my education and professional background, I spent the last 10 years in executive leadership roles. As part of that, I've really cultivated the notion of what I call the three Cs when it comes to team building, which is communication, cooperation, and collaboration. I feel very strongly about building relationships, not only between the school board member, but also students, administrators, parents, and other community members as well. I really look forward to serving on the McFarland School Board. And I've seen the challenges that the school board has been tackling for the last eight-plus years. And I look forward to bringing my leadership and oversight to the board as well.
Question number two, how do you plan to engage parents, families, and the broader community in the decision-making processes of the school board? Bruce?
This is me. Well, if I could be honest with you, I knew nothing about the school board, even though I taught for 30, about 40 years. It's just something that, it's an ongoing, it's a learning curve involved. But a lot of the things that Megan just mentioned are so important. What I have is, I'd like to see the school district work to improve our communications within the district and the greater community. I think it's a big problem we have. We're already providing online access to school board meetings, but for those who aren't able to attend them, we need to better communicate our vision and our plans. Similarly, the village also finds that not enough residents are attending meetings. And therefore, many residents are not informed of what's going on. We heard this when the village board people were talking. If you're serious about gathering decision-making input from residents, then we need to educate and inform them. I would like to see the district work with the village to find a communications director who could be shared by both entities. This position could also help in coordinating the district and the village on budgetary and growth initiatives, as well as letting the public know about the good things that the district and the village are currently doing. I know before I got on this board, there were times there was almost, it was confrontational. It was almost like we're gonna stick them, and it kind of bothers me. It's like, we all in this together. Our schools bring incredible value to our community. Many people have moved to McFarland because of our schools. We keep hearing this. However, our school district needs the support of our community if we want our schools to do what they need to do. It's important to remember that around 70% of the people who live in the school district do not have kids going to our schools. We need to create, be creative, define ways that our schools can offer value to these people. Our high school swimming pool is an example of a school facility that benefits members of the greater community. It is truly a community pool. We need to expand access to school facilities. This can attract community support for our schools.
So much like Bruce says, communication truly is the key. And I kind of almost feel like communication is the word of the night because we've heard it from the village trustees, we've heard it from the Dane County Board Supervisors, and now you're also hearing it from the school board. I view being a board member as truly the interface between the school district and the community members. And much like Bruce said, there are a huge majority of the community that do not have children in the schools. And it's so important to make sure that we are educating and informing every single community member about what's going on within the district because ultimately, everyone is affected in some way. When it comes to being available, thanks in part to my career, I work from home. I have a very flexible schedule, and I am readily available to talk to everyone within the community. I want to be in the community. I want to be in the schools, talking with teachers, talking with administrators, meeting with parents. I've been going out and doing doors and talking with everyone from the mom who just had a one-month-old baby, Alistair's very cute, by the way, and, you know, she's not quite up to speed as to what's going on, and talking with retired people that are on a fixed income, and they have a lot of concerns about what's going on. So when it comes to engagement, just having conversations with people. I love meeting people from all walks of life. And thanks to my lifestyle, the fact that I do work from home, and my children are now to the point where they really don't need me all that much. At least, that's what I tell myself. I have the ability to talk with everyone and really listens to your concerns and take them back to the board in a proactive and positive manner.
I will just add that I co-sign on everything they just said. Now is the how, right? So how do we do that? So we need to create a space during school board meetings that feels welcoming and inviting, right? So recently, we've changed our policy on how you can make public comments at the meeting. I don't know if the public truly understands how to make public comments now. So perhaps we could make an outline on the, you know, website so that people know how to address the school board, and they are not feeling intimidated when they want to come or feel there's a cumbersome process to getting our attention or having a conversation with us. Another idea I had is, you know, do we create, like, one-to-one meeting times or office hours for school board members? There are people in the community that each school board member is going to connect with differently. So do you have hours that whoever someone feels most comfortable with to come to the school board to share their concerns with, and then they can share it out to the other board members? Again, creating a barrier and not an intimidating circumstance so people can have vulnerable conversations with the board members? Another idea would be, you know, getting the community involved. It's the, how do they come to us, right? Our buildings are open school hours. Yes, there's people in there in the summer, but that might not be ideal for community members who are working typical job hours. So do we create, like, community share boxes or drop boxes or suggestion boxes of messages that need to get to the school board for people who have a barrier of showing up or writing an email or whatever the barrier is that they're not showing up and communicating with the board? We need to break down those barriers so that we can actually have the community come to us and share those ideas and thoughts.
Question three, what strategies do you support for improving school safety, including concerns about bullying and harassment?
First and foremost, I do want to apologize for the cough. I'm currently getting over the spring cold of 2024. So this topic is very near and dear to my heart as my younger son was recently a victim of verbal and physical bullying. I think it's safe to say that we are all aware that bullying and harassment is a problem within our schools. And students and families should rightfully have the expectation of safety when their kiddos are in class. And that being said, I'm very impressed by the McFarland School District and their prevention and intervention protocols that they have in place for bullying. For those of you who aren't aware, there is an online reporting platform that the school district currently uses where students, parents, administrators, support staff members can anonymously make a report if they witness any bullying. It was this platform, in fact, that brought to my attention that my younger son was being bullied. And I got a phone call from his associate principal that said, hey, Megan, I just want to let you know, we received a report from Colin regarding Colin that he was being verbally bullied in a class. We've already spoken with Colin, and we've spoken to other kids that were involved, and we're addressing the situation. And we are taking steps to ensure this doesn't happen. That kind of communication and transparency is so important when it comes to making sure that all of our kids are safe. Bullying is a problem at every single school. And I think by maintaining open lines of communication, not only between administrators, teachers, and students, but also the parents involved, we need to make sure that everyone knows what is going on in every situation. So that way, there is a sense of comfort and safety for the kids and the parents moving forward. Thank you.
The program that Megan is talking about is called SUSO, or Speak Up, Speak Out, Wisconsin, which is a wonderful program, as Megan shared. The newest thing that the McFarland School District has been doing is they are rolling out a new program that is the McFarland School District Speaks Out. So that is adopted from the Learning for Justice Center. And what that does is actually teaches our students what to do if they are in a position where they hear hate speech, bullying, or harassment. So it gives very clear examples on how to engage in interrupting, questioning, and educating someone when something hurtful is being said. Now, we can all agree that there's harassment, bullying, and hate speech happening in our halls, but it's happening in our community too. So we need to figure out how to get on the same page with the same language and the same process on a community level so that we're all saying the same thing to stop the hurtful speech. So my hope is, is that as you are in the community and in the schools, and you start to see these signs go up, take a minute, read them. Is that something that we can partner with the village to get out to the community so that we're all using the same words universally to have the bullying, harassment, and hate speech stop?
It's good that we have the village DEI coordinator here as well. And I think you guys are gonna end up working together. I'll start with concerning school safety. I've made suggestions to Superintendent Tarnitzer of potential security issues that I noticed during my years as a teacher. So some of these have already been incorporated. But I want to give him some kudos here. Mr. Tarnitzer's begun to meet regular with retired McFarland detective Mike Clements to find ways to make our schools safer. I think it is such an important initiative for our district. Officer Clements is a great choice because he's McFarland's first police liaison officer. We've been blessed. We've had three outstanding individuals. And Mike knows a lot about our schools and our community. Concerning bullying and harassment, the district has hired additional support staff and a new diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging coordinator. Each of these individuals can help mitigate the effects of bullying and harassment. However, keeping class sizes manageable is probably one of the most important things we can do to try to eliminate bullying and harassment. Students and teachers need to connect with each other. It's that connection that's so important to successfully deal with this issue. If class sizes get too large, and I've gone through this experience as a teacher, you lose that connection. Students need to feel that there are staff who are looking out for them and can provide a safe space for them to learn. The administration also has to back up the policies that we have. And fortunately, they have. Our school board has backed our administration and staff when issues have come up. The priority of our superintendent and the board is that every student deserves a chance to learn in a safe environment. New limits on cell phone use will help, but eliminating bullying and harassment requires all of us, including the parents and families of our students, to work together to achieve this goal.
Question number four, what is your vision for the future of education in our district? And how do you plan to work collaboratively with other board members to achieve that vision? Cassandra?
Having a more diverse staff that is representative of our community, focusing on data to close the achievement gap presented in traditionally marginalized communities, reducing the amount of hate speech, bullying, and harassment in our district, to be able to have our students feel seen, valued, and heard. To do this, we're going to need collaborative work with team members of the board. We need the school board to continue to focus on the strategic plan that they have previously approved. And the board will need to continue focusing on the vision and mission that they agreed on when they're making any changes to policy and curriculum.
This is the one that makes me nervous because it's pretty long. So I'm gonna read. When I ran for school board three years ago, I talked about how we're all in this together. I also said that we must treat people the way they want to be treated. These statements are still true today, and they always have been. There will always be some give and take, as there should be. But in the end, we have to work together if we want to have a successful school board. As for the future, I envision that there will be greater collaboration between our district and the village. We have to. We need to find ways to share facilities, staff, resources in order to provide services. This collaboration started three years ago when I joined the board. In the recent visit of State Superintendent Jill Underly, our career and technical education program was showcased as models for the future of education. Our tech ed department has used wood from diseased trees that the village removed from village property. And our students were taught how to mill the wood and use it for projects, saving the district money. It was $5,000. Currently, 10% of all the students in the high school are involved in youth apprenticeships. That's incredible, okay? Collaborating with 53 local business partners. We are the leaders in all of Dane County. The village and the school district are collaborating to build an eight-acre solar farm, sharing the electrical output, and saving utility costs for both entities. Lastly, the village is building a new inclusive park, we've talked about it, on Wabisa's property, school property. We're putting a, you know, village park on our school property. We're working together. It turns out, these projects are examples of what the future can look like when the school district and the village work together. In the end, school learning takes place in the interaction between a teacher and the student. If we want to ensure that children receive the best education possible, then we must empower teachers by keeping class sizes manageable, providing them with the time and resources that need to do their job. And that means giving them time to prepare for lessons, work with students, grade assignments, and contact parents. I pursued all these goals in my first term, and I'm gonna continue to do it in my next as well.
So my vision is about academic excellence. As we look towards growing our kids throughout our school district, I think it's really important that all Middleton High School graduates come prepared and equipped for whatever their next step may be. For some students, that's entering a four-year school. For some, it's two years. For some, it's maybe taking a gap year and going and traveling and finding themselves, or they enter the workforce right away. But it's critical for us that we have equity within our education to ensure that all students' needs are being met to make them the most successful that they possibly can. I love the fact that the school district is already doing this, but it's something we need to continue focusing on. I think another big thing we need to really address is the role of technology in the 21st century and how that is being filtered down to our students. We need to have a school district that is very agile when it comes to utilizing technology as it stands right now and in the future. And not only ensure that we're having technology benefit our students, but also be cognizant to the negatives that come with technology. So I'm sure you're all aware TikTok has been in the news recently. And for those with high school, middle school students, everyone's on a phone, and they're on the Snapchat and the Facebook and Instagram and BeReal. I'm sure there will be another social media platform, you know, come April. But it's something that we really need to be discussing because as technology continues to increase, our students are going to be dealing with that as well, as well as our administrators. Another vision of mine is the fact that we are giving our students life skills. I love the youth apprenticeship program. I think it is a fantastic program that our district takes part in. And it's a really wonderful way for our students to get real-world experience while they're in high school. I would love to see this youth apprenticeship continue to grow and grow and grow. And I think we can already tell that it's already happening. In terms of working with the school board, collaboration is extremely key. And I know that all school board members are gonna want to work towards that academic excellence piece that I already spoke about. By having successful and cooperative relationships within the school board in and of itself, that's just gonna trickle down to administrators, parents, staff, and other community members.
Question number five, in your role as a school board member, how would you ensure that the district is welcoming and inclusive for all students and their families? Bruce?
I took part in developing our district's strategic plan. And our mission statement says, "Meeting the needs of every learner every day." And our vision statement describes our district as "an equitable and inclusive community committed to student belonging, achievement, and growth." After a pretty intense debate, we decided to weave diversity, equity, and inclusion into all four of our district pillars. I wasn't necessarily in favor of that at first. But the four pillars are educational excellence, family, community engagement, exceptional staff, and resource allocation. I now think we did right, we did the right thing. We felt that by weaving DEI into all these pillars, we would be working continuously to strengthen our commitment to DEI. Not only did the board unanimously adopt the strategic plan and this philosophy, we also hired a coordinator to help our district work with all students to ensure that they are provided with the resources and opportunities to reach their fullest potential. I'm proud of what we've done these past years, and I want to continue, I want to see us continue to make, continue with that work so that our district can be the best that it can. Lastly, one, another initiative to make our district more welcoming and inclusive is to attract more diverse staff. I want you to know that, you know, I started in McFarland in 1976, and it's not like we haven't done that. It is difficult to do. And that kind of led me to this idea, we need to maybe start growing our own. And I got this idea, if TJ is here, TJ, you gave me this idea, and it's brilliant. Start a grow-your-own project where you get kids who are interested in going into education. Encourage them to do that. And then contact them after they graduate. If they're still interested, give them opportunities to get involved. Because I think that is such an important way to try to bring some of our really talented folks... folks back into our district. Unfortunately, we have a problem as far as this goes, too. We get this nationwide shortage of teachers in all, in all different areas of education. So it's really important that we offer competitive compensation to attract and retain the best staff. So, thank you.
So in my role as a school board member, I think it's really important to understand that being on the school board and the service that comes with it is more than attending Monday evening meetings. It's about being in the community, having conversations, and making sure you're available for when issues arise that the school board would, or that community members would like to see the school board address. There was a meet and greet at Grace Coffee last weekend, and I spoke with a retired teacher, Signe, and she told me, kudos to Bruce, that one of the things she really loved about Bruce was the fact that he was in classes, and I think being visible and having those conversations is so critical. We've talked a lot about communication, and in order to make people feel included and part of the community, is making them part of that communication. So in the past seven years, I should say eight years at this point, of having children in the district, I've been able to have those conversations with administrators, coaches, support staff, parents, you know, my kids' friends, their parents, and it really becomes a collaborative effort, because as someone said in a previous conversation, you don't know what you don't know. And if we're unable to have difficult conversations about what needs to be changed within our district, we can't see those changes happen. We all talk about how knowledge is power, right? Well, if knowledge is power, and with true knowledge, we can guide and create positive and long-term outcomes for our district. I think conversation and communication is so important, and I'm so excited for the opportunity to be out in the community and have these conversations to make our school district the best it can be. Thank you.
So to make everyone feel valued and included, it is essential to nurture an environment where diversity is not just accepted, but it's celebrated and welcomed. So we need regular workshops and training sessions on cultural sensitivity and bias awareness that we can help foster mutual respect and understanding among all school members. We can adjust our curriculum to include a wider range of perspectives and histories that ensures our students are seeing their own backgrounds reflected in their learning and gain insight into the experiences of others. We need to ensure equitable access to educational opportunities and extracurricular activities, which means leveling the playing field so that every student can get a chance to shine. Engaging with families and the broader community in an open, inclusive manner ensures diverse viewpoints are being considered in the decision-making process, leading to policies and initiatives that are truly reflective of the needs of the entire school and community.
And in closing, please provide any closing remarks, final statements, or other topics of interest.
So I think during the course of this evening, we've had the opportunity to answer some fantastic questions that the chamber put together, so thank you so much again for doing that. But when it comes to priorities, like I said earlier, my top priority is ensuring that McFarland schools graduate young adults fully prepared to achieve whatever they might want to. Like I said, it can go the college route, the work route, whatever they really want to do. We have to ensure that they are prepared and ready to enter the next phase of life. To make that happen, my priorities are extremely clear, and unfortunately, we didn't get to get too much into this, but first and foremost, we really need to close the achievement gap and make sure that every student has the resources available to them to help them be the most successful they can be. As we have spoken about, all over social media, as it seems, and in lengthy conversations, we need to ensure that our school district has the necessary funding. The funding covers everything from salaries to ensuring our buildings are safe, making sure that our arts, athletics, and other volunteer organizations are well-funded, and with the referendum that is coming on April 2nd, I highly suggest that everyone really do their homework, ask all of the questions that you need to feel good about voting the way that's best going to suit your household. I talk a lot about how it's about the kids, and when it comes to our school district and the school board, it really is about the kids. We also need to make sure that we are attracting and retaining the best staff we can. We are not alone in the notion that we are lacking diversity within our staff. It is a state problem, it is a national problem, and it is actually a global problem. I had the opportunity to have a conversation with someone who recently went to France, and they said they're experiencing the same thing. But what McFarland School District has going for us is that it's a tremendous community. We have seen this community come together in various aspects. I mean, we came together to save Harvey the dog. We were all so curious about him and making sure we are safe, and it's so wonderful to see all of us come together. I am prepared and motivated to serve on the McFarland School Board. I'm energetic, optimistic, and enthusiastic, and I ask for your vote come April 2nd. Thank you.
First, I would like to extend gratitude for everyone in the room and everybody tuning in virtually, and the chamber for organizing this event. I just want to take us back to, we talk a lot about our kids and our community, and I feel like we're forgetting the piece of our school admin and our school teachers, right? Because without great staff at our school, we don't have great schooling for our students. So being on the school board is a wide variety of looking out for people. So it's our students, it's our staff, it's our administration. Not one of those can survive without the other, and collaborative working all together is very important. In closing, I would bring a unique perspective to this school board. With having a multiracial family, I grew up with a hearing disability in the public school system. Because of my unique experiences, I have the ability to see viewpoints from multiple perspectives that are representative of our community. This allows me to feel very confident in thinking of all of our children when we're making decisions on the school board. I also have countless hours of experience communicating effectively and having hard conversations personally and professionally. These are a few of the key reasons why I'm the best candidate for the McFarland School Board, and I look forward to your support and your vote on April 2nd. Thank you.
I came very close to not wanting to run for reelection. In some ways, I felt like I had accomplished a lot of the things that I was hoping to do. I was concerned because we have two openings, and when Kate Green decided to not run for reelection, I felt it was probably important that I do run, because I didn't know who all would be coming. So I wanted to say, these women are both very, very competent. I mean, they're, we have some really good people here. Kate Green was outstanding, or is outstanding, so it just kind of put a little bit of pressure on me that way. But anyway, I just want everyone to know, I feel like I'm just a very fortunate individual. I've been able to spend 40 years of my life working to educate young people. What a rewarding job. I mean that, okay? It is something I truly love to do. Because I'm retired, I've had the time to visit all four McFarland schools. I try to go four times a year, twice each semester. I think it's one of the most important tasks that a school board member can do. I do this as a way of acknowledging and thanking our staff for all they do, and I know how proud it made me feel to have guests seeing my classroom, engage in that magical moment when kids are learning. It's amazing. It's, for you people who've never taught, that's why, get involved with mentoring. We need mentors. There's kids who need it. I know what outstanding, harmonious schools look like. I love that word, harmonious, where it's everyone's kind of working together, and this is a unique and important perspective to have on our school board. Having lived in this community for 38 years, I know and love McFarland and all that has to offer. Our schools are what brought our family to McFarland, as it has so many in this community. It's our school that brings so much value to our community. We will continue to face challenges, but I think I have the knowledge and experience to make our schools the best they can be. I ask you to please support me in this election for the school board on April 2nd. Thank you.
All right. Well, again, thanks, thanks to all of you for coming. Thank you, guys. I'd like to thank Carly for being our moderator, and Bella, who is our youth apprentice for the chamber, did our timing tonight. So appreciate that. So, thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.